It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, January 11th, 2022. I will call this meeting in the Miami Township Montgomery County Board of Trustees to order. If you could please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Posey.
Here.
Mr. Culp.
Here.
Election of officers.
Okay. At this time, on behalf of Fiscal Officer Newell, I'd like to ask, are there any nominations for President of the Trustees?
I nominate Mr. Posey.
I'll second that nomination.
Are there any further nominations? Okay. Mr. Morris.
Aye, yes.
Mr. Posey.
Yes.
Mr. Culp.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Posey.
We can go to our seats.
We don't want to wait, so we'll figure out who the next person is.
The next item on the agenda today is the nominations for the Vice President of the Board of Trustees. I would nominate Mr. Morris. Are there any other nominations?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Now we can swap seats.
You're gonna have to still press the script.
Will we have these microphones sanitized, please?
Mr. Siegelmeier, you have the reading of casualties.
Good evening, Board. The following is the first responder casualty list through January 11th of 2022. Police Officer Zachary Cotton Jim, Louisville Metro Police Department, Kentucky, end of watch December 18th, 2021. Firefighter Jesse Henry, South Bucia Fire District, Louisiana, end of watch December 18th, 2021. Police Officer Mia Goodwin, Charlotte Mecklenburg Police Department, North Carolina, end of watch December 22nd, 2021. Assistant Fire Chief Bryant Gladney, Boone County Fire District, Missouri, end of watch December 22nd, 2021. Police Officer Kiona Holly, Baltimore City Police Department, Maryland, end of watch December 23rd, 2021. Deputy Sheriff Sean Riley, Wayne County Sheriff's Office, Illinois, end of watch December 29th, 2021. Sergeant Marlene Roberta Rittmanek, Bradley Police Department, Illinois, end of watch December 30th, 2021. Trooper John S. Horton, North Carolina Highway Patrol, North Carolina, end of watch January 3rd, 2022. K-9 Benai, Heflin Police Department, Alabama, end of watch January 5th, 2022. And K-9 Jedi, Seattle Police Department, Washington, end of watch January 5th, 2022.
Please join me in a moment of silence. The next item on the agenda is the recognition of guests and presentations. I don't see any guests or presentations for those other than those associated with the zoning case, which will be addressed later. The next item is the consented agenda. I make a motion, we present, we approve the consent agenda as presented in the packet. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Moving on to new business, Resolution 001, 2022. A resolution to approve a five-year maintenance agreement with Otis Elevator Company. Chief Siegelmeier.
Thank you again, Board. In your packet, I've included a, an agreement, a service maintenance agreement with Otis Elevator Company. Presently, the police department is operating under a contract that was established in 2018. And in this contract, it is the regular maintenance contract, but it does not include the yearly safety inspection for the elevator service at the police department. What we did is, with the help of Mel King, we reached out to Otis and had them rebid for this year. And what they came up with was a new contract that would include the safety, yearly safety inspection. And that yearly price will be $2,431.08. In theory, what it actually just did is, they combined both of those and it's come to a $325 a year savings for the police department. While that's not a huge savings, every little bit helps us stay in time. This five-year contract also would include a fixed yearly price adjustment of 4%. And I'm available to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions? Thank you. Next item is also for you, a motion for a liquor permit for First Watch Restaurants, Inc.
Board, what I've received is a new liquor permit from First Watch Restaurants, doing business as First Watch 93, located at Miami's, 2824 Miami'sburg Centerville Road. What they're requesting is a new liquor permit, which is a D1, a D2, and a D3. For the breakfast establishment, I guess we're gonna start having mimosas at the First Watch. The D1 is for beer-only on premises and sealed containers. The D2 is wine and mixed beverages. And the D3 is spirituous liquor. And I'm available. We have no reason to contest this, and I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
Is the, has the First Watch given any indication they're gonna change their scope of business, add, because these permits give them liquor capability up to like 1:00 in the morning, so...
Absolutely. To my knowledge, unless Mr. Snyder can help me out any, I have not been informed of any new type of business model, other than these permits popping up.
Thank you. The next resolution is number 2-2022. A resolution to authorize participation in the ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program. Mr. Mayberry.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Board. This item comes up every two years and is requirement by ODOT to purchase under their contract bids. If you have any questions about this, I'd be happy to answer them.
I don't see any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next resolution, number 3-2022. A resolution to authorize the township administrator to execute the necessary documents to secure an agreement with the Montgomery County Microfilming Board. Mr. Snyder.
Good evening, Board. This is our annual agreement with the microfilming board to handle the storage of our existing microfilm stock. We are not currently producing any additional microfilm as we switch to scanning and digitizing all of our new permits. We've recently been wrapping up a project to scan a lot of our old microfiche cards, so that we've got those all digitally. But the pricing for storage of the old microfilm stock has not changed from 2021. That is stored in a climate and humidity-controlled vault because of the type of material it is, it would degrade fairly rapidly if it was not stored into those conditions. But beyond that, it doesn't require us to microfilm any additional materials with them. So this is, like I said, just our annual housekeeping agreement with them. If there are any questions, be happy to go over it.
Any questions? You have the next four resolutions. Resolution number four, a resolution authorizing the township administrator to execute an Edge Program project agreement with Montgomery County for utilization of Edge funding. Resolution number five, a resolution authorizing the township administrator to execute a project agreement with Texom OpCo LLC for utilization of Edge funding. Resolution number six, 2022. A resolution authorizing the township administrator to execute an Edge Program project agreement with Montgomery County for utilization of Edge funding. And resolution number seven, 2022. A resolution authorizing the township administrator to execute a project agreement with Hearth Products Control Company, Inc. for utilization of Edge funding.
Okay. I'll take all of those as one group here. So these are all dealing with agreements related to the Edge Program that Montgomery County administers, so that provides funding from some, a set aside of some of their sales tax revenue to companies to apply for grants. Those companies are required to go through their local jurisdiction to apply for those funds, so those funds are technically awarded to Miami Township. We did receive awards for two companies, HPC, Fire Inspired, as well as Texom. Those awards totaled $155,000, with $145,000 going to Texom and $10,000 going to HPC. Both of these projects are located in Lyons Business Park and are projected to create 34 new jobs and help retain 57 jobs within the township with a payroll of a little over $4.8 million. So both of these projects at this time are ready to move forward. These are two manufacturing operations. One is involved in the defense industry and another is involved in manufacturing of residential and commercial fire pits. Both of these projects, again, would enhance manufacturing capabilities within Lyons Business Park and be devoted towards permanent building improvements within those facilities. So we're required to execute an agreement for each project between Miami Township and Montgomery County. And then we also execute an agreement directly with each of the companies between the township and the company. So that's the reason for the four separate agreements there. The agreements outline the company's responsibilities related to being able to get reimbursed for the project. It breaks down essentially, once they complete the construction project, they can obtain up to 50% of the awarded funds. And then there are breakdowns for once they hit certain employment projections that they've committed to. So with that, you have additional information in your packets. I'd be happy to go over any questions that you may have, but that is the basics.
Can you walk us through the process by which these Edge projects come to us? Is that from the county, from the business themselves, or some combination of the above?
It's a little of a combination of the above. The county essentially makes an announcement that they're putting a program out there. Typically, there's, you know, companies that either we're aware of and we've been talking to about potential funding sources ahead of time, or the county has been talking to, and then the companies approach us to see if they might have a viable project that could go through that process. So typically, we've already been in some communication with the company ahead of the program coming out each year. But as the program is announced, some companies do approach us to say, we've got a need for an expansion project, we want to locate a new facility here, and is there any available funding? So this is one program in particular. It does not utilize taxpayer dollars from Miami Township residents, but is utilizing funds that all of us have paid into through our sales tax payments that we've made as we purchase items in Montgomery County. And this helps bring some of those dollars back into Miami Township, so...
Thank you. Any other questions?
No. If I could just add just a little more depth to that process, Chris did a great job. Coming out of this round of funding, there was $2.5 million set aside by the county. This round of funding allocated about 1.6 million. So about $900,000 will go into the spring cycle to be added on to hopefully another 2.5 million. So we have about $3.4 million available countywide. So I would hope that Miami Township businesses hear that and come work with this administration and put some more applications in. These funds are targeting the growth of new jobs or retention of existing jobs. So if there's any businesses out there that are thinking they've got to move out of our county or out of our township because they need to expand their business, we encourage them to come talk to us first.
Thank you. The next resolution is Resolution number 8-2022. A resolution to appoint designees to attend on behalf of the Board of Trustees in the Fiscal Officer Training on Public Records and Open Meeting Requirements. Mr. McCord.
Yes, good evening, Board. This is an annual, we've turned it into an annual housekeeping item, just to ensure that the staff stays up to date on open record, open meeting and records retention requirements. And the law does, while it stipulates this for the elected officials, they do allow for designees since they are the ones, in our case, are actually processing those events. So we do this at the beginning of the year, and then we will schedule that training throughout the year as it works into the operation schedule here.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions? The last item...
It's somewhat unrelated, but I'm wondering, is, does staff ever, should they ever be qualified to attend OTA? Should, I mean, Ron, if you attend...
Yeah, they can attend.
Okay. Do we send them to OTA?
They might go.
Okay, good.
So who Chris goes, the play goes.
Yeah, okay.
I think Alex, did he go on? OTA.
For those of you watching from home, OTA is the Ohio Township Association, which has a winter meeting, which is its only meeting, which is very entertaining to me that they still call it the winter meeting. Thank you. Last item, new business, a motion to rescind the grievance to the Ohio Supreme Court. Mr. Culp, did you wish to address that motion?
Yeah, so I'm not going to put this motion forward because what I requested was that there be an administrative withdrawal of this complaint that was sent to the Ohio Supreme Court. If for some reason you think, Mr. Hess, that there needs to be a motion and someone else can sponsor a motion, I'll support it. But I did not send this to Columbus, and so I don't believe it's appropriate for me to ask that, create a motion for it to be rescinded.
It'd be a decision of the Board to do that, that's the method to do that, not an individual trustees' wish to have that done.
To have what done?
To have the, have a correspondence to the Supreme Court to have that rescinded.
Right. But my point, just to be clear, is I don't believe that the Board ever sent correspondence to the Supreme Court. So to rescind it, I think someone should make a motion to rescind it, and I'll support that. But I did not send this to the Supreme Court.
Any further discussion? It's the public comment period. If anybody wishes to speak and is not here for the zoning case, we allow five minutes of participation. I don't see anybody jumping to stand up, so we will move on to consideration of the vote and resolutions. Excuse me. Resolution of motions. I will make a motion that we approve Resolution number 1-2022. A resolution to approve a five-year maintenance agreement with Otis Elevator Company. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I would only comment, I don't want to slow down the approval of this, but for future agreements, I'd like to see more than one quote solicited, even though this was an ongoing relationship and I don't have any problem maintaining it and it looks like a good price, but I would like these things to be shopped in the future. That's to all department heads.
I actually echo those comments, but I do appreciate your previous thoroughness on some of this. I think this is, this is a good opportunity for us, and that's general advice. Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I will make a motion that we approve the liquor permit for First Watch Restaurants, Inc.
I'll second.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I will make a motion that we approve Resolution 2-2022. A resolution to authorize participation in the ODOT Cooperative Purchasing Program. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution number 3-2022. A resolution to authorize the township administrator to execute the necessary documents to secure an agreement with the Montgomery County Microfilming Board. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I'll make a resolution that we approve, make a motion that we approve Resolution number 4-2022. A resolution authorizing the township administrator to execute an Edge Program project agreement with Montgomery County for utilization of Edge funding. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution number 5-2022. A resolution authorizing the township administrator to execute a project agreement with Texom OpCo LLC for utilization of Edge funding. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I'll make a, a motion that we approve Resolution number 6-2022. A resolution authorizing the township administrator to execute an Edge Program, Project Agreement with Montgomery County for utilization of Edge funding. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution number 7-2022. A resolution authorizing the township administrator to execute a project agreement with the Hearth Products Controls Company, Inc. for utilization of Edge funding. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution number 8-2022. A resolution to appoint designees to attend on behalf of the Board of Trustees and Fiscal Officer Training on Public Records and Open Meetings Requirements. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Any further motions or resolutions before the Board? Moving on from new business to public comments.
Nope.
We're not in a public hearing. I'm sorry. We're into the public hearing. I will make, that's it. I make a motion to open the public hearing for zoning case 393-07. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Zoning case number 393-07 is now open. The following will be the order in which this hearing will proceed. Staff will give a, give a report, the applicant will give a presentation, all proponents will speak, all opponents will speak. A time limit of five minutes will be placed on each of the speakers. When you speak, please give your name and address for the record, and the Board will close the public hearing prior to taking final action. The Board will now hear the report of staff. Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements for this hearing been met?
They have.
Do you have a recommendation from the Miami Township Zoning Commission, and would you please review your report at this time?
I do have a recommendation, be happy to review my report. Good evening, Board. The only zoning case for you tonight, CC 393-07, is a proposed final development plan, requesting review of a development plan for the PD-1 zoned Rivendell Plan Development for a residential subdivision. The zoning commission heard this final development plan at their December 14th, 2021 meeting, and recommended to approve with stipulations and a four-to-zero vote for approval. I will provide all stipulations on screen here in a moment, the zoning commission recommended, but first we'll review the details of the final development plan. For site context, the Rivendell Plan Development is located south of Vienna Parkway, west of Mohawk Trail, on the east side of the township, east of State Route 741. The property is owned PD-1, is a planned residential district. A bit of zoning history, March of 2007 is when the property was initially rezoned from the R2 single-family zoning district to the PD-1 planned residential district. At the time, in 2007, there was a mix of differing use types of residential, some more condominium style. There have been several applications filed since, leading up to February of 2020, when the Board of Trustees adopted the Rivendell Plan, Plan Development Regulation Amendment to adopt a preliminary plan and development standards. The preliminary development plan at the time had a similar lot number, lot layout, road layout, and showed similar access to what the final development plan is proposing today. At the time, the plan was reviewed by Montgomery County Engineers Office, various township departments, Community Development, Public Works, and the Miami Valley Fire District, who made recommendations that played into the final development plan before you today, as well as the development standards, the regulate specifics of the development, such as how the homes will look, materials they're made of, lighting, landscaping, signage, et cetera. We can jump into all of those items here in a moment. So again, general site plan, 31.7 acre property, 82 single-family residential lots are proposed with access from Fox Run and Rosecliff Place. The lot and roadway layout was again reviewed by the Engineers Office, Fire District, Public Works, Community Development Department. No additional comments beyond concerns for the road layout were given by the Engineers Office or the Fire District from what was given on the preliminary plan. Elevations of model homes were approved as part of the development standards. Six model homes were provided, varying home sizes. Elevation material requirements, such as brick requirements, no vinyl siding is permitted, were approved as part of the development standards, as well as minimum square footage requirements for all of the homes within the development. I have images of these model home types in a moment, but again, would like to reiterate that individual homes would be required to be issued zoning certificates at the administrative level. Staff will review all of these items to ensure that individual development standards are being met throughout the development, that all items are satisfied. Starting at the smallest footprint, going to the largest, here are photos provided by Again, a minimum of 80% of the cumulative, cumulative facades are required to be of rickor stone material. There is some flexibility for hardy plank or other siding types, other siding varieties. Staff was able to meet with Ryan Holmes at the Ryan Holmes Design Center to view all materials that are presented to a potential home buyer, what options they are presented with in designing their home. There are a variety of brick, stone options. There are pallets to provide different recommendations for color combinations, for siding, trim, and other sort of accent pieces on the home. So again, all of these will be reviewed by staff at the administrative level, but again, would like to provide an example of what Ryan Holmes will provide to home buyers in the process of building. A site plan is provided with pedestrian connections. Currently, four-foot sidewalks are shown throughout the entirety of the development on both sides of the roadway, as well as an eight-foot path that connects the cul-de-sacs on the south side of the property. Montgomery County Engineers Office did provide feedback that around all open areas, including detention basins, a minimum five-foot sidewalk is required for ADA compliance and access in the interim between zoning commission and now. The applicant has provided an updated plan that meets these requirements. Signage was accounted for in the development standards. The applicant has provided examples of home site signs, advertising signs, and examples of entryway signs. Two monument signs were proposed near both entrances at Fox Run and Rosecliff, as well as temporary marketing signs, model home signs, and individual home site signs. All of these items, again, would be reviewed by staff administratively for sign certificates to ensure they comply with the development standards approved for the development. Additionally, the zoning commission did recommend that staff work with the applicant to determine if an alternate sign design could be come up with that better matches similar signs in neighboring neighborhoods, such as Vienna Parkway, to create some identifiability between these signs and create a sense of place and commonality between some of our residential neighborhoods. There's no development-wide lighting plan, no streetlights proposed for the development. All lighting would be responsibility of individual property owners. There are some standard lighting packages available for the homes, but these homes would be reviewed and subject to the township-wide property development standards, pardon me, property maintenance standards, which in case of a light being a nuisance to a neighbor would be reviewed like all other residential properties, but there's not a comprehensive lighting plan. In terms of landscaping, there's a substantial amount of existing trees and plant life on the property. The developer is required to conduct a tree survey to provide all size, type, and condition of trees on the property. The developer did provide this tree survey and has also provided a tree preservation plan, as well as a new planting plan. The majority of preserved trees are located along property boundaries, southern detention area, with 68 trees ultimately shown as being preserved with an average tree caliper of 13.2 inches. For reference, a new tree planting under code, the minimum caliper at breast height is two inches or two and a half inches, so these are relatively substantial growth trees that should provide good screening and coverage starting out with the development. In terms of new plantings, the emphasis on placement is screening buffers to the north and east of the property, as well as furnished trees along the roadway, and walking trails to the south of the property. The plan currently proposes street trees planted in the tree lawns within the public right-of-way. This is the plan initially provided by the applicant. At the time of initial review, discussion with the zoning commission, there was some question and concerns that staff had discussed with the Public Works Department about potential placement of trees in a tree lawn in the public right-of-way, particularly potential impact on curbs, sidewalks, roadway, and just wanted to be sure that if trees were placed here, that there would not be undue impact on infrastructure. Since that time, staff has had various discussions with experts and different groups who have experience in street tree programs. We've discussed with an urban forester, with the higher department of natural resources, potential impacts of street trees, preferred street tree species, types, placements, things that they have seen. We've reviewed, Department of Agriculture, tree specs, specific... specific issues that arise with different tree species to ensure that the species that are selected here would thrive and succeed in this environment, would not cause undue impact, as well as other various communities who have existing street tree programs that intentionally place trees along the roadway. Street trees have a wide variety of impacts and benefits beyond an aesthetic benefit. Certainly, we have a couple of photos of street trees. This is a neighborhood in Centerville that have street trees placed along the roadway. Pardon, the Google Images there, you can see the roadway. It's a little difficult in the winter to take good pictures of street trees, but Google Images, another neighborhood in New Albany, a little bit more mature street trees. But again, a common thread that we found with Department of Natural Resources, other communities who have implemented street tree programs, and guides from the Department of Agriculture, show that proper planning and tree selection is what allows a street tree to survive, thrive, and not cause impact on infrastructure. One of the primary examples is deep-rooted trees that do not have lateral root growth. Those are one of the common causes of disruption. Sycamore tree is an example. The initial tree plan had sycamores proposed in the right-of-way. We had comments from all parties that we shared the plan with that said, get rid of the sycamore, that's the one that's going to cause you problems. All the other trees will do great as a street tree, or hardy trees that would survive salt or other impacts of being a street tree. Here's just a quick illustration of sort of the road sectional showing the placement of a street tree, intentionally placing that, again, between the road and the sidewalk. Some of the benefits there, creating a very natural barrier between a roadway and a sidewalk creates a safer walking environment. A more distinct barrier between the road and the sidewalk. Street trees have been proven to lower traffic speeds in areas where trees are grown adjacent to a roadway. They lower temperature for pedestrians walking in the area, and again, have an enormous aesthetic benefit, as well as being part of a comprehensive plan for street trees that the township has some ability to regulate how those are maintained long-term. Ultimately, the zoning commission recommends that all street trees and all site trees be maintained long-term, like all other infrastructure sidewalks, ultimately by the homeowner or the homeowners association, with trees placed in the right-of-way. The township could intervene if there were some traffic concern with a low-hanging branch, but generally would be treated like all other private property for the purpose of maintenance. Construction schedule, generally, the applicant is proposing a two-section, two-phase construction schedule, ultimately to end site work June of twenty twenty-three. I can allow the applicant to discuss further if there are any changes or expectations for that, but generally, the plan proposes construction entrances made of a coarse gravel to be placed and installed at both entrances for Fox Run and Rosecliff to minimize dirt being tracked from the sites to our public roadway network. The zoning commissioner recommends that township staff inspect these installed construction entrances, concrete washout areas, prior to any other site work being done, to ensure that right out of the gate, a construction entrance is in place that will minimize impact on our road network. In terms of stormwater and grading, there are three detention areas proposed at this time to contain all site water. Stormwater plan was designed independently from the neighboring residential development in Miami'sburg that is approved and ongoing. So the zoning commission would recommend that there be some exploration into whether or not potential reduction in the detention area size is possible, with the intent of preserving trees that exist on-site around those detention areas. So for the purpose of grading, there are quite a large number of trees, existing trees that will be removed to create these detention areas if those basins could be reduced at all. There's a potential to preserve a large number of high-quality existing site trees. And then again, just a brief approval timeline. Staff recommendations and zoning recommendations we'll get into in a moment show that, should the Board of Trustees approve, the timeline of getting to actually constructing homes, there are some recommended items. One, that all construction entrances be inspected by Public Works prior to final site work. That Community Development Department inspect the tree preservation areas, that all trees are properly marked to ensure that they are maintained throughout the development. And then again, finally, zoning certificates would be issued for full site landscaping, grading, individual homes, and all site signage. So a list of all zoning commission recommendations have been provided to the board. I'll quickly run through them. There were nine recommendations, nine stipulations at this time. I think I've alluded to all of them so far, but we will quickly read through the recommendations. One, applicant must provide an updated site plan and adjust sidewalk widths. This was provided already by the applicant. Two, applicant must work with township and Montgomery County to adjust stormwater line locations to avoid street tree planting areas. This is an item to ensure that if we move forward with street trees, that there is no interference with stormwater lines. Montgomery County Engineers Office has stated they would easily be able to work with the applicant to adjust these lines if necessary. Three, applicant must work with township and Montgomery County to determine if stormwater detention basins can be adjusted to preserve additional existing site trees. Four, township Public Works Department must approve installation of construction entrances and equipment cleaning areas prior to issuance of full zoning certificate. Community Development Department must approve marking of tree preservation areas prior to issuance of full site zoning certificate. Six, township staff is permitted to adjust the location of all site trees in response to street visibility, utility placement, and other conflicts with specific tree placement. Seven, developer must maintain all streets trees, or all trees on-site, pardon me, for a period of at least one year from installation of landscaping until all public roadways are dedicated and accepted by Miami Township, and all private land is under control of homeowners association. Eight, the applicant must enter into a maintenance agreement with Miami Township that includes provisions that require homeowners association maintain all street and site trees. Allow the township to assess costs related to street tree maintenance to the homeowners association. And nine, the applicant must work with township staff to review existing signage in surrounding neighborhoods and create consistency in design for new Rivendell signage. So that was a long list, but if you have any questions, Board, I'd be happy to discuss.
Were there any staff recommendations to the zoning commission that were not adopted?
No, the zoning commission adopted all eight initial recommendations and added the ninth to review Rivendell signage.
Are we under any other maintenance agreements with any other homeowners associations with regards to the tree lawn issue?
So at this time, our most recent residential subdivision was adopted around twenty years ago. There was no street tree program initially enacted. Staff has discussed with legal counsel, the law director, who has stated that there is no concern entering into such an agreement. We've discussed with the developer, there are instances in other jurisdictions where this is common. Staff's also discussed with Centerville, many homeowners associations, this type of agreement is in place. The tree is ultimately the responsibility of the homeowner, homeowners association, but the township or other jurisdiction certainly has the right to step in and intervene if the need is there by being in the public right-of-way.
Thank you. Any other questions?
In looking at the photo of the drainage plan in these basins, at one point, there was a big discussion back and forth on wet versus dry. What did we ultimately land on? And has that been stipulated, or is that?
I believe it is a wet basin, but I can allow the applicant to discuss further from what I understand is a clay base that would retain water. But again, I'm happy to let the applicant and engineer discuss further.
And then what's the process with which there's been an ongoing drainage issue for the homeowners on Mohawk Trail from this undeveloped property? And one of the hopes was through this development, it would address that issue. How was that discussed to the county and the drainage plan?
Yeah, through my initial conversation with the engineer, this plan would divert the majority of this water before it ever reaches that eastern property line. In my discussion again with the engineer, only around half of the lots closest to that property, the immediate access would be draining towards the rear of that property. Most of the water would have been intercepted prior to ever getting to that point. Again, I can allow the engineer to discuss further. They certainly are the expert, but in theory, these basins should grab most of that water and pull it away from that eastern property line that is not happening today.
Any further questions for Mr. Carlson? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
The board will now hear from the applicant. Please state your name and address.
My name is Bill Kethler, fifty-one thirty-one Post Road, Dublin, Ohio. Thank you, Alex. Good job, you pretty much covered a lot of the issues out there. You know, we'll develop this, as Alex mentioned, over a two-year period. We anticipate the builder being out probably in twenty twenty-five. And, you know, we, our HOA documents are probably thirty pages long, and we really, really do a good job trying to control the subdivision as long as we can to keep it clean. I've been doing work with Ryan Holmes for fifteen years. They're the cleanest builder over Fisher, D R Horton, M I. So they're really, really good to work with. We, we, I've got children. We're always worried about the safety and with all the construction activity out there. So we really take it to our heart to try to keep a good subdivision. And I've been developing all my life, so I enjoy it. We're very proud of what we do. Ryan's just a great builder to have along here, and they sometimes get a bad name for their product, but, you know, they're really, really good. Jeff Van Adam, my engineer, is strong, does a great job designing. We try to save every tree we can. I love the outdoors, I love trees. If we can reduce the detention, we will. One, it costs us more money, but we try to try to keep the topography to make it nicer for our residents. I love meandering paths through that area. So it's just a really, really good site that Ryan brought to me. And I know it's been controversy for a lot of years I've been here, but we're really excited to bring a quality product here. M I's developing next door to us. I will be working with them and Redwood to make sure there's a cohesive construction schedule between those sites that we produce the least amount of runoff and impact of the streams as we can, that were required by the EPA and various other sources. So we just really try to do a good job with that. They, M I's a quality developer too, and so I think it'll be really nice for the area. I know it's not in your area, not governed by you, but we're really looking forward to making a nice development for all that. I met some of the residents at the last meeting. They had some concerns with the drainage. We find usually when we come in, we fix a lot of that drainage and help everyone else, because we'll slow it up and modernize it to the runoff, one of the requirements. So I'll answer any questions. I've got Jeff here, as I indicated, my engineer, and also Mark Locke of Ryan Holmes. Thank you.
Any questions?
So can you confirm what Mr. Carlson said? Is it a wet or a dry basin plan?
I think it's wet.
Yeah, I just, I'm very excited about this development coming forward and addressing those long-term drainage issues that those residents on Mohawk Trail have had, because that undeveloped property, just all that water, for whatever reason, coming east. So I think you mitigating and development of this property, taking the vast majority, if not all of it, away from that is going to be a real benefit to those folks on Mohawk Trail. What's the setback plan? Is it, did we assign a minimum? And do you expect any fluctuation? Or are almost all the homes going to have a specific setback from the street? Do you know what that measurement is?
I'll let Jeff comment on the setback, or Mark.
Yeah, I can comment. Mark Locke, eight eighty-four Pleasant Valley Drive, Springboro, Ohio. As far as the setbacks are concerned, the houses we typically will put on that front setback line, only from the standpoint, we don't know, because some of the houses that we're offering of those six products, some of them are thirty-eight feet deep, some are forty-foot deep. If they had a morning room, then they're fifty-six foot deep. So we try to put them. Now, on the left and right side, you will see some shifting. Some houses will be shifted. These lots are, for the most part, seventy-five foot wide. With those setbacks, we have the ability to move that house a little bit to the left or a little bit to the right on that lot. It'll depend on the topography. We should put the garage on the low side of the lot, and whether or not they're going to option out for like a three-car garage. So these lots are big enough to offer that as an option for the buyer to have that three-car garage. So we pretty much try to stay in that setback footprint. We're not going to stagger the homes because the lots aren't super deep to begin with. We start staggering them, then we may not be able to fit a deeper house on the lot adjacent to it, because it was staggered or not staggered. So we typically try to keep that front set yard, frontline setback.
Do you require or mandate a post light?
It depends. It's not something that is standard in every one of our communities. It depends on the surrounding. I think in this case, without any kind of street lights, we'll have the coach lights at the garage, coach lights at the front door. Typically, if there's no light program or in the area, we'll put the coach light out, which typically goes about six feet in from the sidewalk, six feet in from the edge of the driveway, squared off the edge of that.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation. I love the plan for the tree-lined streets. I think that's going to be beautiful, but when those trees mature without any dedicated lighting, that's going to be, those streets will get dark quick. So those post lamps, you know, set on photocells will do wonders to keep the community safe. So I'd like to see that that be, if not mandated by this board, encouraged.
If it is, we have no problem with that. What we found is to run that electric out to that light, we get settlement in the yards, and it's an absolute maintenance. It's not, I don't want to say it's a maintenance nightmare, but we have to go back out and reservice almost every, because you dig that little trench for that electric cable that goes from the house out to that pole light, you have to go back out, you get settlement. But we do that at a one-year service on every home anyway, for nail pops and stuff like that. I don't think it's a bad idea. So if it is a condition, I think we don't have a problem with it. I know Bill didn't mention it, but the discussion of the street trees, I don't think inherently we have an issue whether they go in between the sidewalk and the curb or actually in the yard. We had suggested, and what we're starting to do in a lot of our communities, is take that street tree that's actually in the right-of-way, which becomes, you know, who's in charge of that? Our HOA documents, and I think a copy of the language was submitted to your township staff, basically requires, even though that tree in front of that house is in the right-of-way, which is not on that property owner's legal property, it's their responsibility to maintain, and if it is not maintained, or if it dies, it's their responsibility to pay for it, to put a new tree in, to keep it trimmed, and all that other good stuff. We can do that in the HOA. It creates problems, though, because then you get a homeowner saying, well, that ain't even on my lot. Why are you making me do that? So what we're doing in a lot of instances, and again, we have them both ways, and we're indifferent. We don't really mind if they're in the side. We would prefer, though, to have them actually in the yard, so on the backside of the sidewalk. We're starting to do that in communities. And we line them up, and I think you had a, Alex had a rendering up there that showed the trees in between the curb and the sidewalk, and then the trees that are on the outside. When that tree is in that customer's lot, we can, via the HOA, be a lot more secure in requiring them to maintain that, just like we require them to maintain the other landscaping on their property to not allow them to paint their front door purple, to not, you know, all kinds of stuff. We have a lot more control on that. What we're doing is putting it on the house side of the sidewalk, but agreeing that that tree has to be placed consistently on each lot at a certain distance off of that sidewalk. So let's say six feet off that sidewalk. So you do get that same street tree effect down both sides of the road. It's just actually on the home site side of the sidewalk. It does two things. Again, it allows a little bit more teeth in the HOA to have the resident own that. It also keeps that canopy another fifteen to twenty feet away from the street. Those street trees are great the first ten, fifteen years of growth. As they get bigger, they do start to encroach on the street, and they are going to require trimming, and you see that up and down, you know, where you'll see, you know, the utility company or someone, they come and they just trim a tree, and they just trim one side of it, because it's encroaching in their, you know, area. It keeps the tree even further away. Only reason I bring it up is because we're doing it both ways, and then you don't have the potential issue. Again, yeah, with the species that Mr. Carlson has mentioned, as far as that has a root growth that goes. growth that goes down instead of out, you, you only have, what, what is that, a six foot area in between the sidewalk? Seven foot area in between that. So as the tree gets bigger, it, it can have an impact on it down the road. Again, that was something that was discussed at zoning commission. We don't mind where it is, but when it's on the house side of the sidewalk, it alleviates a lot of issues as far as needs for agreements with the township to maintain them if they so need to, because we can control it better through the homeowners association. And I'm not trying to muddy the waters, but I just wanted to let you know, we're doing it both ways. And the reason we're doing it the way I just mentioned is because of issues we've had with true, tree growth in those meetings and having trouble raising up the sidewalk, breaking curbs. I don't know if you've been in areas where there's a street tree program, where you see the sidewalk starting to lift, starting to crack, curb damage, and that's in the public right of way. Once that's dedicated, that's responsibility of the municipality. I mean, that, that curb and, and street is a responsibility of the, the government entity. So I, again, I probably am muddying the waters, and I'm not, they're looking at me going, "Brrr." I'm not trying to do that. I'm just trying to let you know, there are options to putting it in between the curb and the sidewalk, which we are starting to do almost across the board because of issues that arise from trees that have been there for 20, 30 years, starting to create those problems on the sidewalks and the curbs.
Jeff?
Good evening. Jeff Van Ada, Van Ada Engineering, 570 Congress Park Drive, Dayton, 45459. Excuse me, I do want to bring up that if the trees do go in the tree lawn area, that with the EPA guidelines behind separation of utilities, I've got storm sewer in that tree line area. So if we put the trees in there, I'll have to move that out of the right of way onto the private property, onto the lots. It'll be in an easement, because it will be public storm sewer, but it will be on, it'll be on the private lot for the people. So if there's maintenance, you have to go in and, and tear up somebody's yard, whereas if it's, if, if the storm stays out in the right of way, then you're not tearing up their yard as such. Just a side note.
It was my understanding that you wanted the trees between the curb and the street in talking to Chris and Alex.
I mean, the original plan was, the one that we were presented with was the trees in the right of way, which is why we'd originally reviewed that and then discussed this with the other jurisdictions and, and come up with an idea of whether we could do that or not, so.
We thought that was the, your requirement, so that's, we just, I, by land planner, just laid them in that way. So, but it can go, it, it really, it honestly, it doesn't matter to us. It, it's 10, 15 years down the road. It really, it, this is.
I mean, I, I guess from our standpoint, we don't know what issues you've had in the other developments, or if they were utilizing the same trees. Again, there are obviously older projects that utilize species that were not conducive to this. In our discussions with other jurisdictions that have street tree programs, it's worked. They've had those trees out there 15 years or more in many cases, but it obviously is a board decision. It certainly is an impact ultimately on where, where specifically we put them. We can certainly still work with the applicant to see, once they get the final design of the stormwater lines out there, if there is an issue with Montgomery County and putting them in the right of way, we can, we can potentially move them. But I think the staff recommendation at this time, based on the information that we've received from the ODNR and from the other jurisdictions that have done this, is that it is possible to have the street trees there. We feel it is an amenity to the subdivision to have that, you know, certainly appearance of having the street trees in that location. Six feet, seven feet is quite a large street, tree lawn, quite frankly, compared to some areas where we have tried to put trees in urban areas. So we don't feel there's an issue there necessarily, but, but again, it, it certainly is ultimately the board's decision. The recommendation after the discussion of the commission, though, was to leave the trees in the, the tree lawn, so.
And we're fine with that. We're, we're fine with that. It's just.
It's just a recognition down the road.
We understand. Anything else from the applicant?
No, thank you.
The board will now hear from all proponents. Either of you gentlemen going to get up and speak in favor of this? All right. The board will now hear from all opponents. Again, same request. All right, they're staying silent. I will move to close the public hearing for zoning case 393-07. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
We have a relatively complicated set of stipulations for this one. I don't know if we'd like to have discussion about whether we agree with the zoning commission and then talk about whether there's any additional restrictions we'd like to make before we attempt to formulate the resolution that we'll.
My reading of, of stipulation six, Miami Township staff is permitted to adjust the location of all site trees in response to street visibility, utility placement, or other conflicts with specific tree placement. In my mind, that says that it gives the rights of the township to work with the developer to decide if we're going to do the street trees or not. The other stipulations say if we do the street trees, there'll be a certain type of tree. Is that correct? So, I mean, everything in this allows the township and the developer, in my mind, to continue to work together to answer what's the right answer. And if it becomes one way, the other, I would only offer that if we do go with the street trees, I would like to add a stipulation to require installation of some sort of post lamp, and that the administration, the zoning board, work with the developer to make sure we have a safe, walkable community, unless our police department or our Public Works Department has any problem with that.
Mr. Culp, any comments?
No, I'm fine with that.
All right. Then I will make a motion to approve resolution number 009-2022, the resolution to adopt a final development plan for Rivendell under zoning case number 393-07 for land zoned PD1 planned residential district. Therefore, be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees adopt the final development plan for Rivendell under zoning case number 393-07, and modify the zoning commission recommendation with the stipulations listed in Exhibit A, to include the full list of zoning commission stipulations, and to add, I blanked on your term already, post light requirement for the housing sites. Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Get back to my agenda, thank you. Department head comments. Chief Steegelmeyer.
Good evening, board. I would just like to make a report about the signs, the speed signs that you approved at an earlier meeting back in 2021 in December. Those speed signs did come in on New Year's Eve, earlier than anticipated, and actually we got a chance to get some of those up and running, and they are actually in place up on the Vienna Parkway for a trial period to see how they're functioning. So I just wanted to let the board know that the signs you approved are in and we're using them, so hopefully we can get some good traffic data out of it and use them throughout the community.
I'm excited to see the results of this and look forward to your, spreading those throughout the community as we develop data for a specific place. We can start working these in other locations as well.
Yeah, and your comment, we had talked earlier before the meeting, that the, the challenge in getting these up and running was really all in the software setup. The actual physical installation was relatively simple?
Yes, sir. They're totally portable, just like our first sign that we got. Installation took myself and the assistant chief about five or six minutes to put both of them up, so it was relatively simple. Yes.
Anything else for chief? Any other department heads wishing to make comments? Elected officials, Mr. Culp.
I have none.
Mr. Morris?
Nothing, thank you.
It's exciting to be back. We're here next Tuesday. I hope for this to be a fruitful year as president, and I have a greater appreciation for what Mr. Morris has done in leading these meetings after today. We have no work session, we have no executive session. I will adjourn the meeting at 6:59.